Call to order for the town of New Windsor Town Council meeting for December 6, 2023. If everyone would rise and join with me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Our meetings are recorded electronically. We go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to have something placed on the agenda for council discussion should have had it to the town hall by the last Wednesday of the month by three o'clock. Anyone wishing to speak over here, we have a sign up sheet over there. Anyone that is wishing to speak will have three minutes to speak unless otherwise designated. At this time, I know we have there the, yes, business recognitions. This is something I started many years ago to recognize our businesses for their years of service here, and there's a couple that aren't here, but when I call you up front, please come up front, and we'll start with Huffman Geological Services. Unfortunately, Deborah was forced into grandparent duty tonight, so we will present that to her hopefully at the January meeting. Uncle Matty's Eatery? Matthew? The mayor and council recognizes Uncle Matty's Eatery for their 10 years of service, 2023. Have a few words?
I'm scrambling right now. I just got done after dinner. I'm still wondering what's going on down there. It's been a busy 10 years, to say the least.
Well, we hope New Windsor's been good to you. I know every now and then there's a water main break, but.
It happens. I've learned that over the 10 years here. It happens, and we make best to do.
We appreciate that, and I just want to put a little plug in for Uncle Matty and Matthew. His staff and himself worked, I don't know how many hours, putting together hundreds and hundreds of subs for a fundraiser for New Windsor Lions Club just about three, four weeks ago, I guess it was, and the benefit is for a family dealing with pancreatic cancer. So, thank you for all that. I greatly appreciate it.
Got it, son.
He is one that gives back to our community. We greatly appreciate it. So, thank you.
No problem. It's over here for you.
Thank you. Want this to cover? Matt?
Oh, no.
Little Noodles Daycare, please. The mayor and council recognizes Little Noodles Daycare for their 20 years of service, 2023. A few words? I think you got to go to choir practice.
Yes, thank you. New Windsor's a wonderful town to live in. I've been able to raise three kids on my own here and keep my business going. It's actually 30 years I've been doing daycare because I was licensed in Baltimore County prior to this, so I just want to thank everyone for all your support. I love this town, member of the choir, member of the fire department, so I help out as much as I can, and I just want to thank everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. New Windsor Family Dentistry? The mayor and council recognizes New Windsor Family Dentistry for their 20 years of service, 2023. And any words?
Well, I think that we, council, the mayor, and everybody else who put this together, you know, it's January, time goes so fast. January will be actually 21 years, which means my practice is old enough to drink. I thank God that I'm able to practice dentistry and that, you know, he gave me a family that supported me, and especially for the patients that choose me to be their dentist. The outpatient, some don't have anybody to work with, and, you know, they choose. There's so many different places they go to, and, you know, 20 years seems like a long time, but it goes quicker than you realize, and for the past 20 years, I've tried to get people to get my name corrected, correct pronunciation, and I came up with, you won't suffer with UPHR, and my wife told me, it's hokey, horrible, terrible, don't, don't, don't do that. And being the obedient husband I am, I did it anyway. But that is really something, that is my mission, to really try to make it so that patients feel comfortable, and they feel safe, and they feel at ease when they see me, and I guess I should put an asterisk, they might suffer with a bad joke, pun, attempted humor, but New Windsor is very special. I get to see something that I don't think a lot of dentists get to see. I'll come up to the front desk with a new patient, and there will be a normal standing patient in the reception area, and they usually get there early because they can't wait to see me, or maybe they want to get it over with. But it's like, they see each other and go, oh, hey, how you doing? I did, you came here, and that's a small town thing, you know, and it's just so great to see that kind of interaction, you know. You hear that small towns are dying, yeah, there's no interactions. Like, you see it now. I see it every day, almost every day, and it's so great to see. So, you know, I invite everybody to send the family, your friend, or even your enemies if they're nice. I don't like mean spirited people, but thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And Law Office of Jack J. Agalo Jr. He's unable to be here tonight, but in his place, Linda I. Colts is going to accept the plaque. The mayor and council recognizes Law Office of Jack J. Agalo Jr. for their 30 years of service, 2023. Have a few words to begin?
I want to accept this award on behalf of the Gallow Firm, and also that Jay regrets that he couldn't be here with us this evening. He left yesterday to go to Denver, Colorado for the Hooper Steel Museum, and so I just want to say that Jay grew up in this area. His law firm is at 105 Green Valley Road, his grandparents, Andy's parents, lived there, and so Jay's been here all his life. So, on behalf of you, Mayor, and the council group people, I want to say thank you for the, for the award.
Well, thank him for us.
All right, thank you.
Here, here, put. For dinner on Friday. I'll give that to you later. 2023 Audit Presentation and Overview. Oh, yeah. Sorry, minutes. Sorry about that. Thanks. Approval of minutes from the November 1st, 2023 Town Council Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
A second. We have a motion and second to approve the minutes from the November 1st, 2023 Town Council Meeting. All those in favor, sing by me, sing aye? Aye. I suppose so carry. Thank you. All right. 2023 Audit Presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council, for having me here to present the financial statements and the results of the June 30th, 2023 audit. First, I have to thank Gary and Don for all their help in giving us the information to complete the audit in a timely fashion again this year.
Sorry.
That's right. So first, I just want to go through some required communications to the council and the mayor. These are just a summary of items in a couple of letters. So, we issued an unmodified or clean opinion on the town's financial statements. We issued our opinion in accordance with the generally accepted audit standards. We had no difficulties in performing the audit. We had no disagreements with management over any accounting or auditing matters. We did not identify any significant unusual transactions. We obtained required representations from management prior to issuing the financial statements, and to our knowledge, the town did not consult with any other accounts about any accounting or auditing matters. While completing the audit, we required to communicate any significant risks we identified during the audit. We identified two significant risks. That was management override of controls and improper revenue recognition. We designed audit procedures to mitigate these risks to an acceptable level to complete the audit. We did identify, there were some material journal entries that we did propose related to capital assets, debt, and fund balance, so we did provide a material weakness over internal controls for having to propose these journal entries. The journal entries were reviewed by management and approved, you know, prior to being posted the financial statements. It's not a new condition. We've given this finding over the last few years. So now to some brief highlights with the financial statements, and then surely if you have any questions, please jump in. So if you turn to page 10 of the financial statements, this will be your statement of net position. It'd be page 10. Thank you very much. So if you go, so basically, this, this statements are on a full accrual basis. This has all your assets and all the liabilities of the town, capital assets included. And if you go to the bottom of the page, you'll see your net position. So this is really what's left, you know, after you take your assets minus your liabilities. You're seeing your net position for governmental activities, which really is the town's general fund. You see you have one point, almost 1.5 million of unrestricted net position. So it's always, you know, I commend the town that you have a positive net position. A lot of governments, municipalities now are actually have a negative net position due to pension and post employment benefits. If you go over to the second column, that's your business type activities, so that is your water and sewer fund, and you'll see you have unrestricted net position of 3.6 million as of June 30th, 2023. A couple items you will see on the statements, you will see restricted cash and unearned revenues in the governmental activities. That's basically due to unspent American Rescue Plan funds at the end of the year. You know, the town did receive their second tranche during the year, and also there's a grant in there for the water main grant funds, too. It was unspent, this is the unspent portion as of June 30th, 2023. And as of last year, we did record a lease receivable of 587,000. That's related to your future revenue the town expects to receive from their leasing the tower space of T-Mobile and Verizon, and there's one other, there's a third provider also. So the next page I like to go would be page 11. This is really your statement of activity for your governmental activities and business type. This is really your revenues and expenses during the year. And the net change, if you go down to the bottom for governmental activities, the change in your net position for your governmental activities was $1 million. That, an increase in $1 million, and that's really primarily to, you know, the town had a lot of capital projects this year, so that's really expenditures that we've capitalized that exceeded depreciation expense. And I think that was really to my earlier two expenses, rehabilitating the dealman inn, and also a road paving project also made up the majority of those items capitalized. Otherwise, I think the general fund really had like a $100,000 increase for all the revenues over expenses for the year. Second column you'll see is your business type activities, and the change in net position, or a change in net position for that was $512,000, and that's, you know, that's due to your, your revenues exceeded your expenses for the funds for the year. And of course, you did have a decrease in revenue this year for the, for that fund, and that was mostly due to less, you know, your connection fees for your water and sewer. The next statement I wanted to briefly go over was page 12, which is your general fund. And so this is on a different basis of accounting. This doesn't include your capital assets or your debt, and you'll see your own, for your fund balance, you'll see you have an unassigned fund balance of 1.4 million, so which, which is a healthy fund balance. That, that represents 82% of your total, your general fund expenditures for the year. So that is a good reserve. The second column is the Walnut Grove Fund. I just wanted to point out that you did close that during the year. There's a wealth information in the notes, which, you know, if you want to read, there's information in note six on your long term debt, that gives the principal maturity of all your debt issues, and also on page 34, note seven is the leases. That provides information on the lease revenue you expect to receive in the future, future years. So other than that, I didn't have anything to really go over unless there's any questions.
Question I always ask every year, town's in good shape.
Yes, you see, I think you both had health, you have healthy net position in both funds.
Council, any questions? Again, thank you, and thank Gary and Dana. It can be stressful getting all the information, and. But any changes that we, you implemented will be, hopefully make our job or Dana's job easier, and good. Dana, any questions, comments?
While we're doing business with you.
All right. Gary, anything? All right. Coming out?
Thank you.
Always good to know we're in good shape.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was a little busier than what I have written down here, but a couple of things to note. I attended the Consolidated Transportation Program, the TCTP, basically the MDOT tour, meeting with county commissioners and members of our delegation. I updated the MDOT officials on our Streetscape project and requested additional funding for SHA's share of the project, which were about a $600,000 funding gap at this time. That's better than the $2, $2.5 million we were about a year or so ago. If anybody's been paying any attention, and there was an email that came out today, the picture is not very pretty, but it doesn't keep us from continue asking for $600,000, in my opinion. On the state level, that's a, a small project, so we'll, I'll keep working with the delegation on that. As I have mentioned here, Commissioner Viglatti and the delegation are always updated where we are on that. Worked with Councilman Kornick and the staff at Northwest Middle School regarding the shadow meeting. It just didn't work out. We had several students back out, and with vapor, break coming up, we're not sure if January will work or not, and if we can't get it in February, we'll just call it, call it a day with it, but hopefully we can get, get students for, by, by February. I want to thank Councilman Kornick for your efforts up there. The Christmas tree lighting, I want to thank town staff for getting the park looking nice, and Dana for your support in organizing everything that you did, and I want to thank Matt Cohn, New Windsor resident, who he and his brother have, Cohn Creative in Westminster for the plaque, for the bench dedication, and Ronnie came down early to help me clean up the, the park, the leaves and out, out front on the, in the street, on Main Street, so we got rid of them, make it look a little nicer, even though there's, you know, not much you can do about leaves at this time of year. But I think it was a real nice Christmas tree lighting and also celebration of someone that did a lot for the town. As I mentioned there, if you weren't there, Wayne Blackston served with the, or was with the Westminster Municipal Band for 60, or no, I'm sorry, 56 years. The Fire Department, 45 years. Lions Club, 35 years, and had just regionally been appointed to the council the previous year prior to his death. So he would, he was a very instrumental part of our town, and the family really appreciated that, so. And I want to thank the council for all your support with that. And then I've been coordinating with Maryland Department or Maryland Deputy Director of Intergovernmental Affairs, Dylan Goldberg, for Governor Moore to visit New Windsor, and he will be coming out on December 16th for Reeds Across America. So stay tuned for more details, and that's my report. And while he's here, naturally, I will talk to him about a few, few financial requests. You know, you know, I know he's got a tough year with funding, you know, the previous administration did a great job with all the federal money that came down, which we benefited greatly from it, and that's no longer there, so things are going to be a little tougher going forward, but, you know, hopefully we can continue working together with the governor's office, and that is my report. Council committees, community enhancement. Councilman Gubernitis?
Going to keep it somewhat brief, but I just wanted to, to outline and really give a lot of credit to what's already been spoken about tonight, and, which is with the tree lighting and how beautiful the town looks, and the appreciation and how important it is that we recognize the business members of the community, like how the meeting got started off this evening, which are very important things for our community. I have to apologize a little bit as of late. I'm dealing with some, some personal medical stuff on the side, and should be somewhat resolved for me somewhat shortly, so I could be a little more active as I like to be. I have a surgery this Friday, once that's passed me and a little bit of recoup time, I should be bouncing back, but I found out last year that I had a genetic condition that was passed on to me by my mother, and I've been working on that for a little while because there's some things that goes along with that, and I was being treated for arthritis, but then I found out through going through Johns Hopkins, what I was diagnosed with and whatnot, was actually unfounded, which actually had me going backwards, and this is what this surgery with is on Friday, and, and in the middle of all that, I really didn't share with anybody, but they tried to give me a new medication coming out the gate to kind of treat some things until a next step, and unfortunately, that medicine had actually put me into AFib, and I was in AFib for two weeks, and it wasn't until the 3rd of November I was finally brought into a cath lab, knocked out, shocked out of that, so I just can't wait until my life becomes a little more simpler and normal and that I can do some more. And I also thank my time with working on some things with Councilwoman Schultz, that, you know, that we've worked on together, and her reaching out to me, and that's all I got for this evening.
Get better.
Thank you.
Public Works, Councilman Huffman.
Good evening, everyone. Public Works has been busy with leaf pickup around town. Please remember you need to bag or bin your leaves. Consult the latest town newsletter for the schedule. Public Works has been utilizing the new town's street sweeper to clean the leaves from the streets curbing. I'm sure you've all seen the machine and usage around town. You hear the, the humming, and you look out the window, and there it is. The machine is very effective in helping the town keep the storm water drainage system from clogging, so it's a, it was a very good purchase by the town. Public Works installed all the holiday wreaths on the utility poles, ensuring the town looks festive during the holiday season. Public Works also decorated Fountain Park in preparation for the town's Christmas tree lighting, which was held this past Sunday, as you heard. I thought the park looked great and heard many comments expressing the same sentiments. A public shout out to the Public Works Department and the town staff for all their efforts in making our town look festive for our residents and visitors that pass through town. I thought you did a great job. Public Works will be picking up Christmas trees on January 3rd, 10th, and the 17th, and although I have not heard of any inclement winter weather on the near horizon, be assured Public Works has all the necessary equipment ready to go to keep our streets drivable this winter season. The Planning Commission, we did meet in November. We are now in the process of reviewing the revised master plan. Our goal is to have the first third of the document reviewed for our January meeting. Our next scheduled meeting is January 22nd, 2024. And some highlights from, from my month, I've attended the town council's scheduled meetings and the planning commission meeting. I met with the Public Works crew on site at the Gear Lane facility. We discussed the future site layout of the area and brainstormed ideas about what could be done and what we need to do there, and attended the town's Christmas tree lighting. That's all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're in the sewer, Councilman Hall?
So unfortunately, we're in kind of the peak Maine break seasons, if you will. So on November 26th, there was a sewer main break on Code Drive. That was repaired the next day. On the 29th, a water leak was found on a lower main, and that was repaired the next day. During those repairs, two new leaks were found, and many of you may know, on High Street, where there was a, two water main leaks, and Public Works stayed until 1:00 in the morning to make sure that that was fixed. It was a huge, huge endeavor, not only being on a state highway, but they had to get the contractors out in record time to be able to repair those, so then people had water that night. So it was, it was a big effort from the Public Works to the contractors, to the state for helping out with that. So thanks to everybody for, for getting that resolved, and, and as this project progresses on Main Street, we're hoping to minimize those, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Just one little, not really correction, but peak time for water main breaks.
Anytime.
When it's 20, 25 degrees, snowing, sleeting, or something. That's the peak time.
Just get them out of the way, Mr. Mayor. We're going to be done.
Good, good planning. Public safety and health, Councilman Kornick.
Good evening, everyone. I have a brief report. I attended the Opioid Coalition Meeting. It's a quarterly meeting. I attended that on November 8th. It was actually a very, very insightful meeting, made some more contacts, and hopefully we can kind of turn those into informational contacts for the town in the coming, in the near future. As the mayor mentioned, I met with Mr. Davis, the coordinator of Northwest Middle School SGA, in efforts to try to get our shadow day handled and underway, but, you know, that said, there, there are some challenges at the school that they deal with, and the kids, you know, the kids kind of commit to it and, and back out at, you know, or have backed out, but we're going to keep working on it, and hopefully we'll be able to do it in the first quarter of next year. We had seven students, like the mayor said, and two days before, four of them backed out, so we, we still have three, and hopefully I'll be back there soon that I can kind of do some recruitment and get, help get this going. I think the coordinator is, is new. He's a new, relatively new teacher, so I appreciate Mr. Davis's efforts. Our beautiful tree came from Sewell's Tree Farm. Again, they were very helpful and gracious in terms of giving, they gave us a 50% discount off of the tree, so was very appreciative of that, and they, they remembered us from last year and took very good care of us. I think it took us about 10 minutes to, to, to get that order taken care of, so that, that was good. And again, it was Sewell's Tree Farm, and then last but not least, we, I wanted to give the mayor a shout out for his Mayor on the Square Food and Coat Drive. My wife and I attended that, and we actually, I enjoy doing that. I mean, it's just a, a drop off to the mayor, but kudos to you for doing that, and certainly when I was there, which probably was about 9:30, 10 o'clock, you, you had a, you had a trailer load of stuff already, so hopefully it continued, but.
Well, thank you, and I should have put that in my report, but thank you for covering that for me. And it does help the New Windsor Food Bank that is at St. Pauli Nine Methodist Church, and also collect the coats, as Councilman Kornick said, and coats and shirts and all different types of clothing. I think there was at least 50, close to 60 different items, and the New Windsor Lions Club is gathering on the wish list for Springfield Hospital Center for their residents down there. We're not able to go and visit them like we always do because it's very, very humbling, but about 32 items that were donated that day will be. But about thirty-two items that were donated that day will be going to Springfield. So if you know of a family, I have all sizes from children's coats to adults, and some of these still have tags on them. So if you know of someone in need, you know, in our area or elsewhere, I'm not territorial with that, helping somebody because other Lions Club in our district may be using some of them. But if you know of somebody in need for a coat, give me a call. So, thank you.
Councilman Cornick?
How much food you got, Mr. Mayor?
No, the first year, I think this was the eighth or ninth, eighth year. The first year, my slogan was, "I won't be done until I get a ton." And I counted every box, every can, weight-wise, and I kept track of it. I said I would never do that again. Thank goodness I got the ton in like three hours because I was planning on spending the night, if necessary, until I got a ton. But and then every dollar was a pound. So it worked out very well. So probably two to three tons. But then I thought about doing a count, and then it's like, that's another thing I need to add up. And then I'm like, whatever, whatever is donated is greatly appreciated, and it's more than what the food bank had before. So it's always a win-win. Yes.
Economic Development, Councilwoman Schultz?
Okay, so as I do most months or quarters, depending on what they do each year, I attended the Carroll County Economic Development Group, and we distributed the small business passports. Thank you, Councilman Gubernitis, he helped me with that. That was a little bit longer this year, so it doesn't wrap up until the tenth. So if you have a passport or if you haven't got one, there's six participating New Windsor businesses. You could still have time to make a purchase and get your name in the drawing to win a fifty-dollar gift certificate. I forgot how many there are. I think there's ten. So shop local. Related to that, Councilman Gubernitis and I weren't able to connect for a variety of reasons, some of which he mentioned. But based on the discussions we had and some feedback I got from a couple of the businesses I talked to, I think we're just going to do a survey about times because I'm not getting any consistent information about good time to meet. So we'll have more for that, you all, next month about that. And as I've done for I don't know how many years now, I compiled a wreath for, to highlight New Windsor. It's actually a basket with a wreath stuck on top of it. And it has merchandise from both of the galleries in New Windsor and the museum, and it has gift certificates from some of the businesses, and it has wine. And it has a lot of literature about the town, so it highlights the town, and it's called "The Visit to New Windsor." And it helps the town and it helps the Arts Council. And then I attended the HSP Executive Committee and Board Meeting, like I do each month, and always remind everybody as we're getting into winter that they have assistance paying for utilities, including water, but also in the winter, we need to think about heat. So just a reminder to everybody. Just wanted to say maybe we should put something on Facebook about your clothing and stuff too, so maybe Dana could do something for that. And I wanted to thank the Public Works staff and the contractors because I took over managing Facebook for the staff when they went home. And it's always interesting, the comments that people have about an event that was totally unforeseen and nothing that anybody did to cause. And we have people out working in the freezing cold for hours to get it restored, and people are complaining. So I just want to, but I have to say that after I pointed that out, everybody started saying, "Thank you." So I certainly wouldn't have wanted to have been out there dealing with water in that cold. So and the mayor stayed pretty much most of the night too. So thanks to everybody who helped with that. Yeah, well, thank you, everybody.
But I will say there are people, more people on Facebook that are defending
Yes.
than criticizing now.
Yes, it's a good thing.
Yes.
It's a good thing.
Thank you.
Town Manager, Gary?
Okay, so the Maryland Thirty-One Water Main Project update. We had the third project or progress meeting was held November fifteenth. Our next progress meeting is scheduled for December twentieth at nine AM here in Town Hall. The water main installation in Springdale Road, from Springdale Road intersection at Main down to church has been completed. The two-week schedule, we've been getting each, each Friday, we get a two-week look ahead and we post that on website and Facebook. So for twelve, for this week, twelve-four to seven to twelve-seven, they're going to complete eight-inch connections at the very bottom there where church line comes across with Main and then install a couple service laterals there. And then they're going to, they've started the pavement restoration on New Windsor Road. Then next week, the twelve, twelve-eleven through twelve-fourteen, are going to complete pavement restoration on New Windsor Road and Springdale Road. And then due to the colder temperatures, additional water main installation will begin again in the spring. And then Mid-Atlantic will work on sewer cleanout installation over the winter months. So Councilman Hall mentioned about the water main breaks we had on November twenty-ninth. So I'm just going to hit a few highlights on that. Mid-Atlantic had, was unable to get a crew together. They were working on two emergency projects down in Indianapolis, and we didn't want to pull them off of the water main project. So we reached out to Stanballs and they stepped up and got a crew together to help us out. And like I said, went from one, basically one break to the other. The break was, again, was complicated by being in a state road during evening rush hour, night work and things like that. Both the, we had basically two main breaks within twenty to twenty-five feet of each other. Both were repaired with clamps. Again, ultimately, that line's getting replaced next year. Just many thanks, one of, many thanks out to Public Works staff, the office staff for printing out the shut-off notices, handling calls, helping decorate Fountain Park because we had to pull staff, we had staff out, we had to pull staff down to do the repairs. Mid-Atlantic did provide lights for us at night, stone and coal patch. It was definitely a difficult situation, it required group effort. Stanballs, Public Works staff and myself worked seventeen, eighteen hours in the early hours of Friday morning, get it done. Just rest assured, when these breaks occur, it's all hands on deck with the staff and resources that we have at the time. The goal is always to get the fix, to get the break fixed as quickly as possible and minimize impacts to residents and businesses. We recognize those inconveniences to the residents and businesses. And, you know, these situations, they're not planned, they're very unpredictable, they're dynamic, and just take time to get repairs done. So appreciate everybody's patience on that. Blue Ridge Pump Station upgrade, bids are due December fifteenth. The generator and ATS switch were approved at a prior council meeting, and purchase order to Kelly Generators was issued September seventh. So we'll be getting those bids in here middle of the month. The town forum on Bowersocks and Denning's Road at Possible Agricultural Preservation. This was discussed at the November council meeting, and I'm working with, working with the county program manager to attend a future council meeting to provide an overview of that program and answer questions. Hopefully, have him here for the December work session agenda. The, also, looking ahead to that work session agenda in December, wastewater treatment plant, preliminary engineering report for the E and R upgrade. That report is ready for presentation to the mayor and council for overview and decision on providing additional capacity. That's going to be the question you all have to decide. Jason Lidle with GMB will be attending the December work session to present that information. And then FY twenty-five budget. Time will be preparation of the FY twenty-five budget will begin the end of the month, and I'll be putting together a budget schedule, and I'll have that for the December work session as well. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Just on water breaks, a lot of times you see on TV, Baltimore City has these humongous pipes that bust and, I mean, hundreds of thousands of gallons get away. But the breakdown or the water pipe that busted down there, a little bit bigger than that?
The pipe?
The hole. A little bit bigger.
Yeah, the first one. First one was about three-quarters of an entree on the top. The second one was a split, more of a split. It's what, eight, ten inches on the bottom?
But they're not huge, but with the water pressure, you lose a lot of water really quick. So and then hopefully, once Main Street is done with the water line replacement, we can cut water off a lot easier, shorter distances between cutoffs, and less aggravation with people. So.
We, it's, we, when we assess the situation, we look at valves to where, to minimize the isolation. We get out there to exercise the valves, you get one that doesn't want to cooperate, and then you're going further up into the system to shut a valve down. And in doing so, you're shutting more people down. And we hang the notices as quickly as we can, but in some cases, when we, if a valve won't close for whatever reason, then we're going further back. And then unfortunately, those residents aren't getting notices. It's just part of the, part of the process.
You don't need to know that when you start.
No, we want to, we exercised as many as we could ahead of time, but like I said, it's dynamic and fluid as it's happening. We're getting things done.
We are identifying the place of the leak a lot better than it used to be. Than it used to be, water was running down there, but it might have been up twenty-five feet where the break was. So now we're identifying that a lot better and digging almost right where it is.
So.
We purchased a high-intensity microphone, so that allows us to pretty much pinpoint where the leak is. Water will find the path of least resistance. So a lot of times, like the mayor's saying, when you have a leak, it might surface, you know, fifty foot away. And unfortunately, you know, then you're digging up a larger section of road. So it's definitely helped us keep the expenses down for the town to be able to purchase a piece of equipment like that.
Thank you. Well, you might as well just keep going.
I think there's, I think that, I want to just say, I think that the Martin Luther King holiday is early this year, so I don't, I think that that would, we would need to change that work session date in January. I think it's pretty early.
Good point. I'll look at that, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Public Works has assisted Mid-Atlantic Utilities throughout the whole water line project. We've had to shut down sections so they could make tie-ins and things of that nature. I also wanted to talk briefly about some of the water main breaks. Public Works, along with Town Manager Di and Mayor Rup, were present during the water main repairs on High Street. It took a good bit of effort to turn off some of the older valves. And as we mentioned before, sometimes you have to go farther to isolate where the leaks are at. And unfortunately, we had an issue with a valve that actually runs down Mill Avenue and had to shut it down towards Old New Windsor Road, which delayed us getting it shut down by about an hour longer than what we would have liked. But we got it shut down, got the water drained out of the pipe, got the first leak that the mayor referenced, which was about the size of his gavel. And then the second leak then developed further up, and it was about a twelve-inch crack in the main. So we were able to get that one fixed as well. So as a reminder, that particular water main, along with the water main on Main Street itself, are some of the oldest water mains that we have in the town. About eighty percent of our water main leaks or breaks come from those two roads. So once we get those fixed, we should be in pretty good shape. That's why we made that a priority capital project. So we got about another year before we get everything replaced and fixed, but it'll definitely be an improvement on the system. That particular line is the main transmission line from our spring source. So that's why a lot of folks were experiencing pressure issues and things of that nature. Typically, when we can isolate smaller sections, you experience less issues with service interruptions and things of that nature. But it was just a bad circumstance, unfortunately. I do want to thank Stanballs of Union Bridge for stepping in when Mid-Atlantic was busy. They've been in business for fifty years, so a very good organization. They really have helped the town out over the years. And actually, they had their fifty-year celebration on December first, right before the water main break, and they made time to help us make the repairs. So we want to thank them for that. And lastly, the green stakes that are at everyone's property lines between the road and the sidewalk or for Mid-Atlantic to eventually put in sewer cleanouts, please do not remove them. That part of the project, the water line project, will be complete probably within the next three to four months. So it's a temporary stake, so please keep them in place.
Thank you. I was going to ask you about those, and I was hoping it was the layout for the new curbs and sidewalks. I was like, yes! Thank you for the information.
Community Deputy?
Between November first and December sixth, two thousand twenty-three, Carroll County Sheriff's Office responded to the Carol County Sheriff's Office.
The line can hear you. People online, the people online will be able to hear you.
All right, now I'll get it. Between November first and December sixth, two thousand twenty-three, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office responded to forty calls for service within the town of New Windsor. Others called for service were reportable. On eleven-one-twenty-three, at double zero twenty-seven hours, a canine scan was conducted on a vehicle stop in the area of New Windsor Road and Old New Windsor Pike. On eleven-seven-twenty-three, at seventeen forty hours, a domestic assault was reported in the one-hundred block of High Street. The suspect was arrested. On eleven-fifteen-twenty-three, at fifteen forty-eight hours, the sheriff's office assisted the New Windsor Fire Department in the eleven-hundred block of Joe After Place for a cardiac arrest. The patient was then transported to Carroll Hospital Center for further care. On eleven-twenty-one-twenty-three, at eighteen oh four hours, a fraud was reported in the four-hundred block of Church Street. Suspect identified as an ANC Bank Fraud Department employee over the phone and stole approximately one thousand dollars from the victim by persuading them to purchase gift cards. This concludes my report. I want to thank Gary for getting some sign batteries for me. I've been trying to alleviate the speeding vehicles in town. And unfortunately, I can't always be in town, and the signs are quite a large help. And keeping those juiced up twenty-four seven will hopefully slow vehicles down. Over the course of the month, I was able to get five traffic citations in town, but we're going to hope to increase that in the future. So, you know, I've communicated with all our deputies. A lot of them like to sit out at Thirty-One and Tibbetts, but if they can get in town and do some more traffic in town, we'll try to get that for you guys because I have noticed this time of year, substantial uptick in speeding vehicles. So we're working on it. Just want to let everyone know.
Thank you. And actually, at work, where I work, I received a phone call. It was supposed to have been someone from BGE that the person was going to be cutting. They had a work order to cut the electric off where I work, and they would be there in thirty minutes unless the owner went to Walmart, any Walmart, to pay bill. So anytime you hear, most of the time, well, BGE, I called, and BGE representative had just started working an hour before, and that, I was her fourth call. So BGE will not make that phone call. And other organizations and companies will not call you about your credit or you have to, they're going to protect your bank account. That doesn't come from anybody else other than your bank. So be very, very cautious, and you do not go to Walmart to make a payment for almost anything. So just be extremely careful in that.
Thank you. Just reminded you of something else. I actually took a vehicle break-in a couple days ago, and that's kind of been a trend going around the county. There's been at parks and at, actually, at a few churches. These vehicles are parked there, you know, they're at a congregation or...
Um, these vehicles are parked there, you know, they're at a congregation or walking around a park, and, um, the middle of the day, uh, a group will come in and smash windows on several vehicles, steal purses with credit cards, you know, personal belongings. They'll, they'll take the credit cards and buy gift cards at Walmart with the credit card, because then that's cash, and they can use that, and that can be currency for them out on the street. So, um, I, I dealt with one down in Westminster, uh, last week at, at Carroll's soccer league, and unfortunately, um, the victim lost all of her personal items and her purse, and just wanted to remind all the citizens in, in, in New Windsor that, you know, if, if you have a vehicle, even though it's locked up, it's not gonna be completely secure. People can bust the window very quick. There's schools bust windows out now. We carry them on the job, just in case we have to get in a vehicle very quickly. And, um, they can do it very stealthy, very quick, and, uh, just make sure that anything that is gonna be hard to replace is, is not in your vehicle for a prolonged period of time, so. And also, uh, we, we have, uh, wheel locks for anyone with a Kia or a Hyundai, uh, because they, there's, they're, they had an ignition issue with those, uh, where it's very easy to, um, steal a Kia, Kia or Hyundai. We actually have, um, wheel locks that we just got, uh, from, from grant money at the sheriff's office. And we do have them at the sheriff's office, if anyone's interested in, in going up there and retrieving one. And we have a hundred and fifty or so, so.
All right.
Thank you. Um, and then also, with Christmas coming, there's presence of high-value items um, that come in cardboard boxes, and when you recycle those boxes, do not put them out just to let everybody see that you got a forty-six inch or whatever TV, because then they know there's one inside your house. So cut the cardboard up so that it's not noticeable what the item was, so. People will put two and two together, unfortunately, so just a little tip there, so, thank you.
Thank you.
West Carroll Rec Council.
They're making me nervous. Eric Myers with West Carroll Rec. Um, within the board, you know, I have to mention Sandy Sullivan, our trainer, twenty-plus years retired. We, uh, got her gift card. She's a super lady, did a lot, a lot with the rec council. She went through, I think they said, eight different presidents. That's how long she was there. We also, uh, voted in a, a new lady, um, to be confirmed activated, and a vice president, which I haven't seen a vice president on the rec council. It's just I've, I've only been here a year, but. And then we went over a few things. We're just not getting participation from the programs that we cover. We want them at rec council meetings, um. Everybody wants a fix to the problem, but everybody wants to help us out with it. Same with you guys in politics, it's actually a thing with us. Everybody comes to us with, you should do this, you should do that. But everybody wants volunteer, and we're running into that more and more. Um, same people do all the work and all the rec programs. Guys are on the board for the soccer team, also for all the coaches. Yeah, um, the only person on the board of the rec council that has kids currently in the program is the president, and, uh, we just need, we need more participation from, from the community. Everybody wants these things for your kids, immediate help. Um, we're just not seeing it. Since COVID, I, I've seen a big change. Kids all changed. I think it's the parents making this change, and they think everything's just gonna get done. So we're, we're asking for help, and we made a motion and passed that, uh, everybody under West Carroll Rec umbrella, all programs, you have to attend seven out of the other meetings, or we're gonna start issuing, uh, issuing fines, so. Again, they want us to do everything for them, but they don't come at us with any kind of resolution. So basically, that's it in a nutshell. Maybe just gonna ramp up here soon for the, you know, for the spring sports. Uh, winter sports are pretty much on their way, and all good so far. That's it, I, that's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate you showing up.
Eric, uh, if like, excuse me, um, how was the, um, participation from children? Are the numbers still there?
Numbers are pretty much good. Uh, the soccer program is incredible. It's over four hundred kids.
Jesus.
Um, which is great. They cover, you know, over the following town too. Um, but wrestling is down. Kids are leaving us with bigger programs. Wrestling, way down. They're down to twenty-some kids, and it's really hard to compete when you only have that many kids. Certain programs are on the rise, but certain programs are declining too. Uh, we don't have any boys across, I don't know anymore. Uh, girls across, the girls are leaving the bigger programs that can, they think offer more. So, yeah, we're, we're struggling with some sports and other sports, but we're, we're doing fine.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, Eric, I did have a question. So Sandy's replacement, 'cause goodness, I, I think I was on it fifteen years, and I feel like she had been on it twenty years prior to that, so. Um, I know, uh, Councilman Hoffman knows, knows that as well. Is the, is her replacement, um, from the area, or?
Yeah, she is with the cheer program.
Oh, okay.
Um, gosh, I can't remember. I didn't write down her name. Did I, I don't think we voted on everything yet.
Yeah, but that's awesome that she is stepping up to do it.
Vice president too, so.
Yeah.
We're, we're getting a full board again, and, you know, we can hopefully start making fire here again.
Yeah, well, good deal. Good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire chief. Uh, he may be out with Santa Claus tonight, um, due to the fact that Santa Claus is going around the community. Uh, tonight was the first night. They're going to Glenview Drive, Overbrook Drive, Smalley Court. Uh, Friday, December eighth, they're going to Atlee Ridge, Hollowell Lane, Clear Ridge Road, and Union Town. And then Sunday, the seventeenth, Town of New Windsor, Blue Ridge Manor, Springdale Village. The reserves at New Windsor, Snyder Summit, and rain, snow date, Thursday, December twenty-first. So be looking for, uh, fire trucks in Santa Claus, but Sunday, December seventeenth, they'll be going through town. Treasure.
All right, so I'm currently doing a media review for both the general enterprise funds, just based on the budget. I'll have a recap for everybody at the January Town Council meeting. Um, we do have two hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-one cents that has matured with Woodsboro Bank. Um, I have that and a CD. Um, I have four banks with some CD options to give you guys, decide what you would like to do, or if you would like to put it just as a capital to take care of the projects up to you guys. Um, Woodsboro Bank has two options, both with a ten thousand dollar minimum. They have a nine-month at four point six percent, and a thirteen-month at four point three four percent. Point Breeze Credit Union has a five hundred dollar minimum, four point two, uh, four point twenty percent for six months, four and a half for twelve, and then three point seven five for thirty-six months. Uh, Farmers and Merchants has a five hundred dollar minimum. They have a seven-month at four point seven five percent, a thirteen-month at four point five percent, a twenty-month at four point two five percent. Um, and then I reached out to AC and B as well, and their brokered CDs are the following. Um, they have a one-year, one hundred and fifty thousand minimum at five point two zero percent. Nine-month with a hundred and twenty-five K minimum of five point two five, and then they have a T-bill um, with a fifty K minimum at five point zero five percent. So it's up to you guys what you would like to do with that money. It's currently just sitting in Woodsboro Bank in a mutual, in a CD. Um, and I have worked out an agreement, no matter what, we'll, if we break it, we don't have to get fines or anything like that, so. So it's getting some interest right now, but what would you guys like to do with?
What was that? New, New Windsor was what, five?
So New Windsor, uh, the brokerage was five point two zero for one year, and that was a Citibank. Um, and then there was a five point two five for nine months, and I don't recognize that bank. Um, and then the T-bill was five point zero five, yeah.
How, how long was the T-bill though? Was that a year as well?
That was a year.
The shortest one was the nine-month one.
There was a seven-month one too.
It is seven months with Farmers and Merchants for four point seven five.
Just refresh my memory, New Windsor for AC and B.
AC and B has the majority of our funds right now.
But that was also the highest.
That was also the highest. Um, personally, I like to have a little bit everywhere, but that's my personal opinion. Um, if you went that route, I mean, Farmers and Merchants have a seven month at four point seven five, or a nine-month at Woodsboro. We keep it there for four point six.
Four point seven five seems better, 'cause it's shorter too.
It's shorter. We can figure out what we'd like to do.
We need money and.
Uh, if we need money, the feds raised the interest rates again recently. I, we're all predicting it's gonna start slowly going down, but again, no one can predict rates.
Thoughts?
Well, I would think a seven or a nine month would put us in a position that we could use that money if a, if a project came up that we wanted to put it to, that we'd be able to float something until that time. If we start getting longer, then maybe we'd have to do something different, so.
I agree with that.
I'm in agreement with that as well.
So I guess I'll make a motion to, uh, put the money in the seven-month CD in Farmers and Merchants Bank?
Yep.
Second? Second. All those in favor, sing if I'm gonna sing aye. Aye. Those opposed? So, Carrie.
I have some paperwork for both you and Kim to fill. I'll email you guys. Other than that?
I did have a question. You said the nine-month, you weren't familiar with that particular bank?
I wasn't familiar with the bank, um, because it's a brokered CD. It's, it's through the AC and B investment program. Um, it was a bank that I haven't heard of. Um, so one year at five point two was Citibank, which is a pretty solid bank. Um, again, there has been a couple banks that have gone on under in the past seven months, I guess, so we don't know. Um, but yeah.
Four seven five, sounds good.
And for, let's see, January's meeting is what, the third?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Third, yeah. Does that give you enough time to do a financial statement for the first six months of the year?
Yeah, that's what I was, I'm doing all that, and I'll have that review for you guys.
Thank you. Where is your billing clerk? Kim?
I don't have anything to report to me.
Okay. Uh, Code Enforcement John?
Ditto. I, I don't have nothing. It's been quiet.
We have a report, nothing that I know of. New business, appointment of new zoning administrator. Um, I had, uh, reached out to an individual, and he seemed very interested, and then when I called him just to confirm last night, um, the, uh, he wanted, well, he had a couple questions. One, he was under the understanding that Mike Reynolds does Union Bridge. Is that correct, you know, or not?
I believe so.
He does their zoning?
And whether or not he would be willing to do, that's, his question was whether or not he would be willing to do New Windsor's. So it's not a huge expense, but, um, would save us a little bit of money.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I was surprised to hear Mike was doing Union Bridges. I think that's a little out of the purview of the circuit riders, from my understanding, but.
Unless they're, unless he's contracted with them separately.
Yeah, I don't know the details of it. I can ver, I'll, I'll check with him. He's in this week. I'm gonna ask him tomorrow. Um, he didn't, when he did, when you, when I found out about that, he kinda was, you know, he was, wasn't real thrilled about it. I think they didn't really have a choice, but I think it's stretching the purview of that position.
I think it's stretching it. Yeah, and that's why I'm looking at it like this.
Thing right now, I mean, Snyder Summit is pretty much done permit-wise, isn't it? Other than maybe.
All the permits are pulled for, for Snyder's. They got, they're finishing up a couple houses, but all the permits are pulled.
So now we're gonna be getting down to debts, that sort of thing, which
Pools and things like that.
Probably not that many times a year, but.
Right.
All right, so. Well, we, uh, put that on the agenda for the work session, because he wanted to know.
I just wanted to ask a question, because we had a situation, I don't remember if Councilman Hoffman or um, lawyer, I'll strand, will remember this, where someone suggested somebody who didn't live in town to be on the planning commission, I think, and I thought we passed something related to that, that you, we decided you had to live in town.
That was for the planning commission.
For the planning commission?
Yeah. It was.
Well, the council members obviously have to live in town. Yeah, the planning commission members did not, and they don't have to under the state law, but I, I think you're right. I think we did put that in as a requirement. Your Board of Zoning Appeals does not, and your zoning administrator does not, in fact, your current zoning administrator, unless he's already gone, uh, in which case he's your former zoning administrator, um, doesn't. Right, okay.
Be summer thirty-first, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm unders, I understand.
All right. Any other new business? Old business, sale of leaf machine and dump truck.
Me?
Look at each other.
Okay, so we were able to sell the leaf machine and the dump truck. And we sold the leaf machine for sixty-eight hundred. Uh, we thought that it might be worth around five thousand, so we did very well on that. Uh, and we sold the two thousand eight Ford dump truck for twenty-two thousand five hundred. Now, our original offer, uh, from Krausford was eleven thousand. We valued the truck at about fifteen to eighteen, so we did really well on that also. Um, and we retained the plow that was only two years old, uh, from that truck, and actually put that on the new dump truck.
Nice. Recycling.
Yeah, we really made out with our vehicles over the last couple months.
Thank you. Great job. Public Works, salt barn and building. Wayne?
All Wayne's show.
Okay, so as Councilman Huffman mentioned, um, we had met down at our Gear Lane facility, uh, and discussed some of the issues that we had, um, obtaining prices from vendors, um, and kinda trying to figure out a layout of where we could put the new salt barn and, and some additional storage for some of our equipment that we've recently acquired. Um, I know in one of the previous council meetings, we discussed, uh, if that site would be large enough for, uh, any future public works activities or equipment, and we've decided that it is large enough. However, uh, we are recommend, recommending, uh, a, a survey of the site that would offer, um, dimensions of the building where the council could look at the dimensions and see what the overall footprint of the proposed buildings would be. Um, and kinda get us a better idea on how to put it out to bid. Um, we went out to bid once already to try to see what the prices would come in at, and I believe we budgeted two hundred thousand for the building and fifty thousand for the dumpster wall, which is very much needed, and, um, I think it came in at three seventy-five for just the building, and that's not even including site work. So I think, uh, based on our conversations with Councilman Huffman and other Public Works employees, it's probably a good idea to get a site plan together, um, to make the process easier.
So I'd like to tag on to that, um, that, um, I would highly recommend that, that, that we go that route of getting a site plan created. I'd like to see, um, you know, that we could all see one time what that footprint looks like, what we are proposing. Have someone in there that can give us maybe some ideas that we didn't think about of the, the proper layout for that idea. And then it would maybe allow us to piecemeal that, uh, area as we move forward, you know, instead of, uh, just throwing a ton of money at it at one time that we may not have, that we can say this is where this building's gonna go and start on that, and continue down the line of, of the process. So I think it's a, a good way to go. It would give us a long-term plan for that entire area, and we could prioritize then what, you, you know, we need to spend the money on, but know that we have the long-term, uh, plan in place for it.
Who do you have lined up to do site plan?
Uh, potentially Carroll Land Services. That, they're the most likely vendor.
And we, Wayne, I think based on that first bid that we put out, we, we, in the, in the six-year capital for under general fund uh, projects, we upped that to four hundred for the building, and, and still kept the fifty in for the retaining wall. Based on that.
Retaining wall, we're working, uh, with Condon's excavation on that right now. Try to get a target number. Retaining that wall, we're working with Condon's excavation on that right now. Try to get a target number. When they slow down for Public Works, which they haven't in quite some time, we want to do a site visit to another municipality that has a similar situation. So Mike with Condon's will line that up probably after the holidays and and will go and inspect what another municipality's done and kind of get an idea on what we can do on our wall. The unusual part about our wall was there was, there used to be a barn that was down there at Gear Lane. And so years ago, Public Works tore down the barn, and then we've used that as a dumpster area. Any wall that's over four foot has to have a fence. So what we would like to do is have maybe a grade change there to lower the lot area in the front of the buildings and then elevate a more structural wall, like maybe a concrete wall, where folks could back up to to offload, similar to what the Carroll County landfill has. We've been very fortunate that we've only had three residents that made their way into the dumpster over the years. So everyone has been very cautious. Yeah, but it's it's not a very well-lit area, so we ask folks not to use the area after dark. And there's no fencing, so we're very fortunate in those respects, but.
All right. And just for transparency, my son works at Carroll Land Services, so. I think everybody's known that over the years, but. And then also, when you get an estimate on what the site plan would cost, I'll contact County Commissioner Vigiliati and see whether or not they can fund it because they are gonna be using a good portion of that property that will limited us, but it'll cut back on some of the area that we could use, so. See what not, all they can do is say no, so.
So we wanna, just for clarity, how, what what's the scope of the site plan we're looking to do? We doing the whole property with the lagoon and the courts and the buildings or?
So I I think I think my my opinion would be we would want to do the Gear Gear Lane facility and the tennis court area and the property that backs up to the the former lagoon. And we had discussed this with Councilman Huffman, that potentially if the ball fields ever go in at the lagoon site, we need to kind of figure out how the Public Works site will work with the lagoon and the future stormwater facility and how we can kind of bring another road into that facility and kind of not infringe upon any boundary that we might want for the future, so.
So we we can, I'll reach out to a couple of local surveyors and get some prices and at least on an estimate on the the survey and and site plan work.
So this this will require us to contact Chris Heim with Stormwater Management just so we can see their footprint of the stormwater facility. So it might take some time.
Yeah, that's why I say bring them in on the funding.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other old business? Residents' concerns?
No.
All right. Announcements, I have quite a few. One, I want Shirley Autovator recently passed away. She was on our election board for, I don't know how many years, but several years, and did an outstanding job. So wanted to express on behalf of the town and council and staff our deepest sympathy to the Autovator family. She was part of our family at one time here, so. And then Wayne contacted me today, and I contacted Dave Kiefer. And Dave and Julie Kiefer donated a globe that he's had for about fifty years. And Wayne and staff put it up on the fountain today, correct? So Dave did not think it was the original globe, but probably from that era. He he said when he was surveying, and I guess it fifty-some years ago when he was just recently surveying, I guess, but but I don't know what that, but it came from a house or a property over in Frizzleburg. So not sure where it originated, but Julie and Dave Kiefer donated that to the town. Let's see here. Also, Santa, again, will be coming to New Windsor, Atlee Ridge on Friday, the eighth. Sunday, the seventeenth, the Town of New Windsor, all the developments. And then the rain, snow date is December twenty-first. Christmas tree pickup is January third, tenth, and seventeenth. And then also, the Christmas tree at Fountain Park. We decided to put that out for people that wanted it in town. And we, they would have to pick it up by December thirty-first or the third or what what's everybody want to do? Leave it up for longer or if anybody's interested, we can put it in the town newsletter because that's going out.
It'll be the first week of January.
Yeah, so or put it on Facebook, that anybody wishing to have the tree, lives in New Windsor, would have the first priority. It would be randomly selected, but would also have to pick it up by, say, January thirty-first. Or I mean, December thirty-first.
Maybe after New Year's.
Yeah.
Like the week after New Year's or something like.
Something like that. Because last year it stayed around for quite a while.
Yeah, we can't be home in the middle of the weekend.
And let's see, everything else there. And next Thursday, I will be having a partial D replacement. They really hesitated because I was so young, but. But. But I will be, I will still be available. I'll be around the house for for probably about four weeks. So I'll be available for meetings and different things, so if you need me, I will be around town for the most part, so. Anybody have any other announcements? Anything going on?
Yes, New Windsor Heritage is having, Santa's gonna be busy because in in addition to riding around on the fire truck, he's gonna be getting his picture taken with anyone who visits the museum between eleven and two this coming Saturday, which I think is the night. And then the pictures are free. However, we are strongly encouraging donations to our building fund. We've had some assessment done, and the building needs about thirty thousand dollars worth of repairs. So that's substantial for a small organization like New Windsor Heritage. And at the same time, as people can get their photo with Santa, we're having our annual free ornament giveaway, which are ceramic ornaments that depict historic sites in New Windsor, one per family. And Frank Badavick will be there signing his second edition of his New Windsor history book, so come, busy day, come visit us.
I'm sorry, and that's eleven?
Ten two.
So right after you're finished with breakfast here, you can go up and have Frank Badavick sign a book.
Lions Club has a literacy, youth youth literacy. You'll be invited to How the Grinch Stole Christmas, Saturday, December ninth, ten to eleven, at New Windsor Community Meeting Room, and special guest is Santa Claus. So everyone is welcome to this free event. And each friend will receive a book and goodies.
Aren't we all?
Thank you very much. Anybody have anything else?
Do we want to move the January work session to Tuesday? Because that is, that is the fifteenth is Martin Luther King, okay?
All right. Motion for adjournment?
Make that motion?
We have a motion second for adjournment. All those in favor, same time with the guy, close. Thank you, everybody.